It's in it and it gets hiding and you know you're getting chunks and chunks don't go good to the salt.
I was in Port Smith Saturday, it actually drove down by the state pier. They've got giant white tarps over right now, but that's all salt under there.
So is this price from January to December? What is it?
It's dollars from July one of this year to June 30th of next year.
Of next year, okay. And if you don't use what you say you're estimating your uses? And it's leftover, can you get that for the same price? Your usage or is it gone, is the slate is cleaned in June?
I didn't fill the shed this summer because we had some issues that we're fixing right now. And I want to order it as soon as possible, so that's why I want to get that signed. I don't know how many goals it's gonna take, but we got, you know, we got room to get, we should be able to go right up at first of the year without having to buy after we get this first ship hopefully unless we get up.
And what is um?
I don't.
Do we go over our salt line?
I don't think so.
This year we didn't, right? We haven't yet, so there is money if you wanted to order some now to, in this year's budget. To fill up the shed.
But you have to have a place to put it to do that.
But I don't know if I'm gonna get charged with the other way.
Right, right.
Oh yeah, there's money to buy for this year.
We gotta get this because the contract goes from July of this year. We're too late to buy into the old price. Alright, so the question is how much do we want? To reserve. And it says here, I, you must have talked to them. It says a total tons one thousand. But we only reserved.
I, I don't, I didn't have nothing to do with that.
Okay, so, hold on just a second George, Caroline, I'm sorry, you're here for something else, but I'm gonna pick your brain anyways because you're here. Four hundred sixty-four tons, is that what we reserved or that's what we actually used?
That's what we actually used.
That's what we actually used in twenty seventeen.
We always ask for that. For the past several years we've asked for a thousand.
Right, okay, so. That, that is a big scary number, but the scarier number is a thousand tons. And that's what we're reserving and we only use about half of that, a little less than half of it this past year, but. You know, so that's all we have to do, we're less this year, but, so it would be for a thousand ton. Or do you wish to keep, and you wish to keep it at a thousand, you don't want to change it, you think that's good?
Let me save this over here.
Yeah. Alright, so we would need a motion then to enter into a contract with Miss, with Morton, not Miss, with Morton Salt, cause we're, can't speak. Take a look at it.
So your motion would be for a third rate, right?
Yep.
And for up to quantity up to.
Up to without. Reasonable? People seem to like the road players.
Yeah.
As what is this?
No, maybe I can ask a second.
I move that we enter into a contract with Morton Salt. To reserve a thousand tons of salt at fifty-five, fifty-four a ton.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? So we're gonna stick strictly with the, with just salt application or not salt and sand?
The only time we'll use sand is if it gets cold, that salt's not working.
Okay, alright, and you and Ed have both already run through the, the green, the green way to plow. Alright, so. Prost, whatever it's called, so there, there are different techniques that they're both gonna be able to employ, actually be able to save us some salt too, so. Alright, is all those in favor of entering in with Morton Salt, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright, let's see here.
So do you come after the fact when your sand purchased? I mean, it's not now.
We didn't purchase any last year and we have plenty in the shed.
Oh, okay.
Okay, delivery address.
And the sand we use, we can mix, we actually got sand from the cemetery, we wanted to remove some. After they, we got about sixty-three.
We wanna, I don't wanna be in contact present with the salt people, do you, do you want George or do you want Caroline? Okay, so we'll do that blank then, you can fill that in, I don't want Morton Salt calling, asking when the best time to deliver it is or whatever because.
I get that.
Or where the bill's going because.
Yeah, for YouTube.
You don't get that.
Miles has got the, almost on Doian.
Oh, oh yeah, you too. Alright, so.
No, they got the green one.
That's checked, nope, it's gonna go, it's gonna go into here, we're gonna leave it. Are these items that need follow-up? I'm gonna put it into that. Alright, that's where the contract went. We'll go through again, at the end, put an N O meeting once. Okay, Miles you got four, George?
Alright, I have a P O for number fifteen hundred for the city of Dover, for Oak Street paving.
Okay.
For twelve thousand five hundred dollars. We haven't get the bill yet, we're guess we'll be told as soon, the motion will be, so.
Motion to accept purchase order fifteen hundred for paving on Oak Street with twelve thousand five hundred dollars to the city of Dover.
That's it, done.
Okay, so everyone is on the same page, which was done before you arrived, Miles. City of Dover approached us and said, you know, they, they wanna deal with Oak Street this year. Which caught us by surprise, because we've actually been asking them when they wanted to go treat, and said, oh, we're not doing it for several years. Apparently several years was a year. In Dover. George had some money that was going to be spent, could possibly spend on other road projects. This came up, it was twelve thousand five hundred dollars, which was. A lot less than what we thought it was actually going to be to put the shim coat over there, so.
Oh, it's just a.
It's not a full reclamation of the road, but a full reclamation of road for twelve thousand dollars, every road would be done every year, but.
Where's it coming from?
It's coming from line.
It's got the heaving line that we've got the caper.
Yes.
Yep, just wanna make sure it's on there, well, you'll know.
I can tell you what to call.
I'm all set, I know.
No, okay.
I just wanna make sure that's.
Caroline knows the line.
In Caroline knows, but.
Yeah. Any other questions, Thomas, concerns?
Is it done completely?
It is.
So they didn't go as far as the previous road in some areas and that's what they wanted? I mean, this Tarbion, Old Tarbion where they stopped, like more so by the side where the pool is, there's some areas that can go all the way in, on the inside of it?
Yeah, we probably did, truly.
Our side, our half of the road is completely.
It did come up through.
Oh, no, it's great, yeah.
They did, they didn't do a certain portion up to the bridge where that, because it. When they have to do the bridge work, which will have to happen in the next several years, which Dover again, who knows when that really is. It would have all torn up because of drainage and everything, so they didn't wanna spend the money. And I agreed with them, George agreed with them when we met with them. Okay, but this is only, just so people are clear, it's just a, the coat, it's not a full reclamation, so. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of purchase order fifteen hundred, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Help alleviate the George and crew having to dodge traffic and filling potholes hopefully in the middle of.
Paving in January.
Or paving in January, hopefully.
That road should be.
That's right.
Alright, I have a purchase order number fourteen eighty-eight for four hundred ninety-five dollars for Jack's towing of New York. This was for when the truck broke down in the storm in March, he just didn't get it built, so.
Oh, okay.
It's actually the two towings, went to tow the truck back here. See if we could find out what was wrong with it, and obviously it was, they, we couldn't pick it up on the computer. He had his computer, we couldn't pick it up, so we had to tow it to Bill Doobie's. And Bill Doobie's. Took and repaired the truck for us, so that's for four hundred ninety-five dollars, two towings.
So I moved purchase order fourteen eighty-eight for four hundred ninety-five dollars for Jack's towing in New York for two, two tow trucks.
Okay.
Which, I can't remember George, where's, probably on here.
Five fifty.
The what, the five fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was a corroded spatter relay in it and the computer said it wasn't showing nothing wrong with it. It had a small crack in the top, a few bugs under it.
So what line are we going?
That's under the vehicle.
Vehicle maintenance, and is this vehicle of a. Certain classification where we need a specialized tow truck or, just wondering why we had to go to York to get a tow driver, not someone around closer?
He had one from Dover. It's actually a bigger, it's a bigger truck.
So that we did need, we needed a bigger tow truck, okay, that's, people are gonna say, well, why didn't you get someone from Dover, it would've been cheaper, you needed a larger.
Right, it was a truck, yeah, the truck was fully loaded with salt, had the plow on it, everything, so.
I, I just wanna, when someone, someone are bound to ask us in town, so now I know, we all know. Alright, are there any questions, concerns, complaints, anything else with this purchase order? Alright.
He was actually there once.
Okay, are all those in favor of purchase order fourteen eighty-eight, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright. Okay, thank you.
And this is a little bit bigger. This is for truck two, the International, which is sixty and all, I believe right now. Did not pass inspection, we were leaving spring tracks on all the way around, so all those springs have to be replaced on that vehicle. Originally it was only the front set, but when they continued to look around, they found another crack in the, I mean, it was originally used to back set. So the P O's are five thousand in case they need, it's not gonna probably be five thousand, but in case they need spring hangers or anything like that when they dare to buy. So this is for Donovan Springs, P O is fifteen zero one. Rear and front springs for truck number two. And I believe, dump truck that's lasted six years, it's done very well with being in the salt and stuff all the time.
Okay, hold on just a second.
Okay, motion to accept P O one five oh one for Donovan Springs, for the rear springs.
And front.
And front springs on truck number two for, not to exceed five thousand dollars?
Yeah, I believe it's gonna exceed five thousand.
Okay.
I'll second that.
On the vehicle maintenance.
I'm fine.
The number has gone up significantly since we spoke, aren't there, did you, George?
No.
I thought it was about two thousand.
It was two thousand before the. He said it would be just under two thousand for the rear springs, if it was only gonna be rear springs.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, okay.
Dover would've charged us two thousand more than what Donovan is charging, that's what the two thousand I told you.
Okay, alright, now I remember now, okay.
He suggested that we send it to Donovan Springs because they make the springs and they can install them a lot faster than, you know.
Than Dover, yeah.
Sam, most garages don't even deal with a data center or a T C.
And, and yeah, Dover told you that they'd have to charge you a lot more.
Oh yeah, he said it'd be about two thousand dollars more if they get it.
Okay, so we wanna go the cheaper route for sure. How are we doing on the vehicle maintenance line?
Well, we were at, we had, we had just about eleven thousand before all these issues.
Okay.
Bobcat's going, they finally got the part for that and we've already approved the three thousand for that, so that's going in, we're gonna bring that tomorrow with the.
You mentioned that this is a six-year-old truck and it has done hell of a well for being a six-year-old?
Most towns are changing springs in two years.
Okay.
Because you, in the winter time, with your plow gear, you're running and you're hauling forty-one thousand without the plow gear on you, it's a lot of weight for them small trucks, those trucks. And the salt is on them all the time and being beat up and the plows, so, you know, they take a beating.
This is the, the first time?
It's the first time these springs have been changed. Fortunately.
And this is something that you notice when you're doing inspections or clearly you might notice something if they break?
Well, we've been hauling gravel with it quite a bit too, so you, you know, we, we watch, we look underneath the trucks as much as we can, but, you know, paint rust sometimes hides things. And then when you start seeing this separate, the springs will separate from the weight, from bouncing around and you start, that's when you notice when. Things are happening, so.
But it, it didn't pass inspection, so.
Right, trucks out of service until we get it fixed.
Cheaper than a new truck.
Kinda, yeah.
It's scheduled for the, uh, next Monday, so we're, we're getting down to it on Monday.
Any other questions? Alright, all those in favor of purchase order number fifteen oh one, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright. Other than this, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, but the rest of the fleet is ready to go for winter after, after this?
Yeah, they've all been, little changement and they're all inspected, but that's just waiting for the sticker.
Okay.
There will be a double door because they didn't work on that truck prior to it, I don't know what that does for them.
Be less than three thousand, I hope?
I would hope so.
Okay.
It's, in order to break can and stuff, they have to be replaced with these.
Anything else?
No, not, no, no more P O's with them.
Okay.
Just wanna give you a heads up, we are in the process of finishing the work in the salt shed, so that's why I wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Yeah, and we moved the. Residential salt bin away from the salt shed to the other side of the yard.
Oh, okay.
Because, I don't know how many times last year I went back to somebody, because they decide, they're coming in for salt, it's more important than us loading trucks.
Ah, okay.
So.
So where is the residential salt bin now?
It's gonna be to the right side of the building.
Oh, okay.
And we have some sheet metal that they, we recovered from when they do it on the. Old highway shed, so we're gonna use that to put a roof structure to keep the water on.
Keep the water on, perfect.
So.
Great. We have a few.
So that should be good and.
Okay.
The baler is, should be just about ready, it's not installed yet, and then we're out the way to Mr. Electric to do the wiring, but that's.
Okay.
Everything in the ground.
Money earmarked for all that. Um, we have Oak Street M O U still on here, I believe you were gonna take a look at it and see if there's anything that needs to be improved.
Sure, I didn't see that.
Okay.
I don't think there's gonna be any changes in.
Okay, but just take a, a look at it again please, so I can let Dover know, we can let Dover know that we're good with what we have on there. And get that settled for the year.
Now, is there any other streets that we have to work with with Dover?
Uh, yeah, Dover also does.
There's Hall Street in Pinecrest.
Pine, Dover or Summer, probably Dover does Pinecrest, right?
Yeah, we're driving Summer's Way and we do that.
Golf Road, do we do golf for Dover?
No, we don't, we only do Bear Road.
So the very end of Bear Road.
We do, we go to Golf.
So that's, okay. That's what I meant, the, their little portion of Bear down to Golf, okay, we do that for that, not as a trade-off, okay.
And Summer's Way, we do the end of the roads off of Clement. For Summer's Way.
Or Summer's Road, but just thinking Dover. Are there any, are there any other Dover roads you can think of?
No, that's really it. That neighborhood, I mean, I don't know that you named all the streets, but it's that neighborhood behind Hanaford.
Yeah, Hall Street and whatever, there is another street and I can't think of the other.
There, there are a couple of.
Relief for me, anyways, but yeah, that would be it. We'll take a look and make sure they're, they're listed in there. Uh, Oak Street's really the big one, that's where the most traffic and it's where the, if there's a pothole on one end, who gets called? And no, no one goes out, but state law says they have.
I didn't even know the road was closed until I come in on Monday morning, last, when they had that issue last month.
Someone pops a tire and the state law says we had to have it fixed within like twenty-four, forty-eight hours of notice, or we didn't get noticed. One of the towns is gonna be on the hook paying for the, paying for the pothole, for, for the repairs of the car because we didn't respond, so. I'm not sure we get that all, and it includes police too, right, like details and, and Caroline?
We, the M O U should, yes, and it did in a temporary way, it should be addressed.
Take a look at it again. Okay, so then transfer station attendant position, we have Mr. Martels down there.
He's doing a very good job.
Welcome him and thank him for his work, we have one vacancy still, are we advertising for?
Still looking.
Okay, but how are things?
Might have, there's someone that spoke with Saturday, Gary Carron, he's been on by the time here in town.
Okay.
He may be interested in doing the Saturdays.
Okay.
So it'll be taken at all.
Good to have another person.
During the week right now, we're doing it, we're, you know, at, occasionally, but. Two days during the week are pretty easy, we can probably handle it right now for two, but. Then we start getting into the recycling more and stuff, it's gonna have to be paid more attention to it.
Okay. Alright, I think, we have two other things on here, there's the Department of Transportation Student Project. I'm gonna table that then, what do you wanna talk about, have you had a chance, did you see the email? I can't remember if it was a, was George C C on that, Caroline? Okay, so, you know, I'm gonna send that to you, there was. Department of Transportation was here. Last year and the year before last, talked about Portland Avenue and what can be done with the intersection of a crossing of Bear Road, Roberts Road and Portland.
I would see that.
Yeah, and there was a proposal by engineering students to do a study and I'll forward it so you can see what they're, they're proposing or something we think. Did you, you may not have been.
I, I saw the email, it didn't.
But you are here then, okay.
Didn't understand the purpose.
Okay, so why don't we, I would, I wanna table, but I wanna, I wanna look at it again and. Strike original planning, I went to their meeting, I don't know what it was, I have another one on Thursday, but during the day. Met with Kyle, who's their, their transportation planner, he, I reminded him that he was supposed to be working on an application for us. To do an audit of that road, a federal audit, a state g audit, there's no charge to us, but he needs to get the application in for us. And it ties in with this, so I wanna wait to hear what he has to say about that before we talk about it, if that's okay. The other thing we have on here is a request of the Water and Sewer District to plow. You had mentioned George, you didn't think it'd be an issue.
Right.
Couple of weeks ago, right?
And I still don't think it'll be an issue.
Okay.
He said, I, I told him, we can open, he told, if he keeps it open, we, we'll push everything back for him after, you know, and we, that should not be an issue.
Okay.
We can do it when we come in between, you know, wait for the sewer to build again.
Right, okay.
Keep an eye on that.
So what we need to figure out then, as a board. Is what makes sense to charge the, the Water and Sewer District for whoever's time is doing it. And, you know, wear and tear the vehicles, whatever. We may find that it's a, you know, it's, it's not a, it's not even worth billing, I don't know, it's probably not, I'm sure it will be worth it, but it may not be, so. We'll work on that, but. We should let the, then we should probably let the Water and Sewer folks know that we're, we're in agreement that we will. Have George and crew help them out down there. And that we need to work out the details as to how they'll be paying us for that service, so.
Has, has they been had charged in the past?
They did it themselves, they had a, they had, one of their superintendent, I think it's their superintendent, had a plow on his personal vehicle.
Okay.
Was doing with that, which I, I don't see that as, maybe down at the, the actual yard down there, probably not a problem doing it with that. As tone builds up, it probably is.
Some of these problems are pretty steep.
Is getting into the wells.
And now with the repeater on top of the tower, that's gonna have to be maintained too.
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna.
So.
Yeah. So I have to make sure we keep that on the list too. That one of you approved it out there.
Yeah, and just so you know, Miles, he used it, when we were down to one truck the last motion, he came up with plow for us.
Right.
With their own personal truck, helped us out.
Yeah.
So.
So that's why I said we need to figure out, does it make sense to actually charge them? Or is there a trade-off that they could be doing something else for us and that would, you know, to offset that time, I mean, there may be something, that opportunity too, I don't know.
Why can't we, why can't they offer the, the water bill versus the plowing? I mean, we pay water bills.
I think that'd be wonderful, I don't know the amount of plow, he would cover the water bill though, but.
Our water bill isn't that, is it?
It's the same.
It's just, it's not very big, right?
Eighty-three dollars a quarter and two fifteen a quarter for sewer, but it's the only billing with sewer.
True.
So we, we'll, we gotta figure out.
It's just an exchange and then it doesn't, nobody has to kind of pay it out.
But in the meantime, we're gonna let the Water and Sewer District know that, I'll send them an email saying that yes, in fact, we, we wanna be able to help them and work with them and figure something out about how we're gonna offset costs in the town. But just, you know, do you have anything else for us, George, or anything else that we have for George? Alright, well, thank you. Thank you again for bringing the trucks down, you and Ed.
No, no, like I said, I'd, I'd wanna be part of, you know, I want us to be part of what's going on, so that's like the Christmas parade, I, well, I was bringing a parade over ten.
Over in the suburb of Rollinsburg, right?
Yeah. So, you know, we wanna be out there, that means we wait for the town, we wanna be part of it, so.
That's great. What did you and Ed as folks that don't live in town, and were your wives there too, as I see?
Yep.
What did you think of the firework display of our little town?
I'd be, I'll be honest with you, this is one of the best fireworks displays I've seen. And my wife said the same thing and Sue, and Ed's wife said the same thing, you know, they, it was great, I mean. You know, I was a little surprised, I thought there'd be more people there where most activities are, you know, with donation are free, or.
Yeah.
You know, that surprised me a little bit and, but, you know.
It grows every year.
People are busy.
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you, we had more there than we had ever had.
Yeah.
In the last two or three years that we did it, so, I mean. It went from less than a hundred to two hundred and fifty plus people, so.
I mean.
And I, and I would love to see more, you're absolutely right, but.
A lot of kids and stuff, a lot of adults got to see the equipment, they got in the equipment, so, I mean, it was, I think it's good, I could, to see, you know, see what you have.
Yeah. But really, it did grow immensely this year, which I was really happy to see, so.
But like I said, if anything we can help with, that's what we're here for, so.
We appreciate that, thank you.
George.
Head on the brain now.
And I know you were talking about this, we have it and we'll.
Sure Caroline has it and.
Yes, and we'll be working there on that this week some more.
And so, uh, we'll, we'll, I wanna do all three next, Monday night, while the police fire and, and you come in and.
Ed will be here.
Playing, okay, perfect. Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night.
Ah, now I remember why you've been sitting here this whole time, thank you Caroline. Town administration, new item.
Could not possibly have forgotten.
I've been trying to forget about this, but I have, can't. M S four stormwater permit, notice of intent, I wish all those people that came for the, for the.
We cannot.
Their last little presentation could listen to this. Fun, done.
This is really fun. Thank you for reading and trying to get through the materials that I've sent you, I've tried to give you a heads up as much as I can about what this is about and some context. This is, I, I've printed for you the notice of intent followed by. A spreadsheet of our waterways and how they are impaired, followed by the guidelines for how we were to fill out the N O I. And I took the trouble to print the many pages because this is not going away, so we might as well get more familiar with it.
Thank you.
That's the supplemental material.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, this has a lot of implications, mostly for the select board, there are some implications for the planning board, it also has significant implications for the highway department. In that we have to make efforts and we have to quantify our actions. And what that means, for example, is. For catch basin cleaning, we're gonna have to approximate the number of tons that we're picking up out of the catch basins, they get dumped in the transfer station, we're gonna have to report on how many tons we're cleaning out of catch basins. We're gonna have to, you know, this happens over a little bit of time, but not a lot of time to adjust, we're going to have to. Require our plow drivers to be Green Snow Pro certified, keep track and log their, their salt, and George is ahead of the game because he already logged his salt usage last year, which was really great. We may have to modify equipment because you're only supposed to use sand under twenty degrees, so you're gonna have to know that. You have to also, in theory, have the ability to modify your equipment so that it can. Change how much salt it's dispersing according to temperature, which can fluctuate even within a storm, so.
Lord.
I, I don't, you know. That's not necessarily the first year.
Right.
But the implications are, are grave, so we have four different area, alright, so.
We have the ground speed controls on, what, is it one or two trucks right now?
I think there's, I think it's two, I think it's two.
But that doesn't, that isn't.
That just makes it a regular steady thing that goes along with the speed, that doesn't necessarily play with the temperature factor, right, so.
Can I ask a quick question? How do you judge or include all of the state roads in this town that affect us?
We don't, we don't, we don't.
And we don't have to?
We don't.
But how does that, their actions could affect our, our actions and they don't care about that?
No, they do.
Oh.
The State Department of Transportation, as well as hospitals and universities and airports, other kinds of facilities have to fill out their own M S four N O Is.
Oh, okay.
So, um, in my office, I have a beautiful color map of Rollinsford with our waterways color coded by how impaired they are. The spreadsheet that you have indicates in what manner that they're impaired, we have E coli and nitrogen and phosphorus and all kinds of things. And those impairments are dictating the actions that we have to take and the way in which we fill out this form. So Paul Casalt, a resident in town you may know. Attended the Sea Coast Stormwater Coalition's meetings with me. attended the Seacoast Stormwater Coalition's meetings with me, Suzanne had started this, and she, by point of information, just sort of happened to find out the hard way that we were an MS four community, quite by accident actually, and got hooked into the Stormwater Coalition, which was very fortuitous because they have state DES people there as well as state representation from EPA there and somebody from UNH whose job it is to inform these communities about our obligation with the MS four and also how to fill it out. And they created the template and the supporting material that you have there and vast quantities of other supporting material that I sent you links to. All because it's an enormous amount of material to type, to try to digest and get into one document. The point of that coalition, which I think is really important, is, is unity in, in reporting. Because we are accountable to the government for, for what we are claiming to do. There's kind of some grayness about what do you mean by this, you know, an outfall, how many outfalls do you have? And, and what exactly is an outfall? They've defined that, but there are still questions about what those things could mean because there are just so many variations of structures and distances from waterways in various communities. It's important to have unity so that we are all doing the same reporting in the same manner and unified comprehension and understanding of how we're doing this. So I can't say enough about the necessity of attendance to the Stormwater Coalition. So, that being said, this NOI due October first is just the first step. As you can see from reading it, it's really outlining how we are going to maintain our permit, which means how we are going to do all of these things that make us worthy of discharging our stormwater into the river systems. So Denise had noticed some spelling errors, and I, I want you to point them out in, in just a minute. I also wanna point your attention to the bottom right-hand side of the first page. There are three empty squares on the bottom right-hand corner there for dates. And the, the second two dates I, I found, which are that the planning board adopted those regulations on June 2nd, 2018.
So that's the third one?
I'm sorry, never mind, sorry, I, I inverted that, February 6th, I inverted my numbers there, sorry.
Which one is?
So the second two numbers, the construction and erosion and sediment control forty, as well as post-construction and stormwater management.
What are those dates again, I'm sorry?
February 6th, they are both February 6th of this year.
Of this year?
Of this year, that the planning board adopted those regulations. One of the things that I really don't know is, and I need the board to help decide this, which is rather arbitrary. We need to adopt illicit discharge detection and elimination regulations. We need, we need to report on the date by which we will do that.
Okay.
So.
And whose, whose IDDE?
That will be the planning board. It's gonna be in our.
Are we taking?
Well, so we can find language about it, that's not really the point. The point is, we need to swear that the planning board's gonna do it, and it's gonna be in the subdivision site plan regulations.
Okay, well, that's, sure, England's a bugaboo at the moment, but it's pretty easy enough because.
So. The other thing to know about this is that it's really extremely important that we file it on time. It can be revised if we find that there is an error. So it's about intent as much as, as much as anything.
Right.
So it clearly won't happen at the next meeting, I'm assuming this needs a public hearing?
It probably needs a public hearing, and I would say, give yourself the time to do it and do it right. I think the point is that you have things in motion and that you're reporting about your intention to do something. I don't think it has to happen in the next month or two.
Okay, but like, two months, six months?
I wouldn't even say by the end of the year, we would be good.
Okay.
They will give us comment, it, for sure, if, if they don't like what we are reporting, they will let us know.
Okay. And where are we gonna, where are we getting the language from?
All of the, all of the advising authorities, state EPA and DES have language for all these things.
And we can adopt and plug into the.
Like, we can get language without a problem, yes.
Site review and subdivision.
Yes.
Okay. So it looks like, have I already jumped ahead, I'm sorry, you're on the first page, so we have those.
Well, so I just wanted to identify something that we need to figure out before, before we go. And then my goal is to get you all to agree to a date to fill in that blank, address typos, and then I'm going to reprint this for your signature tonight.
So effective date or estimated effective date, I would say January, can we say January 31st?
You can say whenever you want.
Nineteen? I was gonna. The planning work got done by then?
Yes.
You're comfortable with that?
What date was that?
One thirty-one nineteen.
It was, it's okay with the.
Oh, they will let us know if it's not, for sure.
Don't let the, this language like, the last set of, you're the one who made it happen, so I'm not saying it was your fault when you were chair, I'm saying we don't want that language.
Yeah, it did language for certain.
What, once they receive all these permits, they will review them and we may be interacting with them about our response. And then they will send us approval of our application pretty immediately, so we'll, they'll, they'll reach out if they need to. The second page is, that beautiful map in, in the office points to where our outflows are. We, this page is about reporting on our four outflows which are in the MS four district. Not all of Rollinsford is in an MS four district. We had the misfortune of receiving a map with a very small area reported to us that got corrected to be much larger. So our obligation is gonna grow over time, but it doesn't change what this page is to look like, which is, for all of these out, for all of our infected waterways that are impaired waterways that are in the MS four district, how many outflows, the second column, how many outflows are on that waterway? And then you can see the columns for the different ways in which they may be impaired, and the last column, other impairments, if they are not otherwise checked off to the left.
Mercury, huh?
Yes.
Coming down from the mills?
Yes. So over, so we are gonna end up having to test our outflows, test the water, report on the test findings. Eventu, there, there's a lot of, as you turn the page.
Well, it doesn't necessarily mean it's coming from the mills, but there's, there's storm drains up here that drain down to that up.
Well, you know, who's to say, I'm sure the goal is to ultimately find out exactly how contaminants are getting into the water, which may or may not be stormwater, as you say.
Right.
The river is already coated yellow from, as it come, as the salmon falls comes in from Somersworth. It turns red just after the upper dam by the mills, and it stays red all the way through to over. So if you turn to page four, public education and outreach, we have to have a certain number of messages per year about a variety of problems, you could say, which impact or potentially impact stormwater. They've given these categories of messages to us based on the kinds of impairments that exist. So we need to send people messages on fertilizer use, pet waste, leaf and yard waste, and septic systems.
What does a message mean?
That's a really great question. There's a lot of supplemental material on that, and I can send it to you, which the, these, these sheets were filled out by materials prepared for the coalition by the people at the state and UNH working for the coalition. So it can mean a lot of things. One of the things it can mean is a sign at the transfer station telling people not to dispose of yard waste, but instead to mulch their leaves for a slow release of fertilizer in their lawn, rather than keeping piles of yard waste. It can mean brochures, and in the case of brochures and email messages, some of those things will be provided to us, and we will have to pay for printing and postage costs, but we don't have to create the message in all cases.
Okay.
So that's one of the lighter lifting categories.
It seems like for, for businesses, developers and industrial facilities, it says that's being developed with the Seacoast Coalition, Stormwater Coalition, which is very helpful, so.
Yes, yes, it is. Can't say enough for that organization because they.
One less thing to do.
Well, yes, but don't mistake one less thing to do for any less work to do.
I'm just meaning developing the material.
Yes, because this.
I understand, we still have to distribute.
Our, our obligation with regard to this is, is quite significant, and I'll get to that in a minute.
People need to start paying attention too, to the beginning year of implementation.
Right, this is next year, so, so that's, it's rather timely because we're planning for the budget, and this is of course gonna have budgetary implications. One of the things we're required to do, as you can see from page six, is for the select board to hold a public hearing about stormwater and its implications, to invite the public. We're gonna have to report on how many people come. There's gonna be like epic levels on reporting about everything you do. And for example, one of the messages can be via email and pointing people toward this, the coalition blog. But then you report on blog hits so that you can try to measure an impact of your reach.
Right.
That is the goal with everything, is measuring impact. So I just wanna, you know, I, I don't wanna go line by line because I think you've all reviewed this. I'm just looking for, to get awareness with the board with, in terms of what we're signing up for, and also to be sure that you agree with the responsible parties. Because ultimately, everything lies with the select board, but some things will clearly be implemented by the highway department or, in, in most cases, the select board, in some cases, the highway department. In one case, the, the water district. And the planning board, the regulations will be the planning board. And actually, the planning board, I, I'm not sure if you agree, but at some point, they have to make sure that people are being compliant with their post-construction stormwater plans, which is gonna have building inspector code enforcement instructions. We have to check up on people and make sure that they are.
Well, so this is where.
I'm gonna have to give them materials, actually, to information.
Well, this is where the, the administrator position actually comes in handy because there are, within the, the planning process, within the site review process, there are a number of developments in this town, there's one on settlement circle. They are actually responsible for cleaning out their own waste water mitigation program or whatever, service, whatever it is, whatever they're called. I don't know if that's ever been done.
I'm sure it, I, I can't say a hundred percent, but like they're not. The problem with that is you can require that in the planning process, but it's very difficult to enforce.
The follow up is what I'm talking about, so.
Well, you can follow up and check in on them, but even if you know they blatantly absolutely haven't cleaned it out, there's no way, there's no recourse.
We need to figure out what that, how we gain that recourse. That's what, so that's also something that.
Why would one development have to do it and other developments don't?
Because each is an individual case within front of the planning board.
And as it requires change.
So the planning board treats them individually, and, and as the planning department changes, as regulations change and, and membership changes, every case is different.
Are they, I don't know what the word is, are they an association or something? I mean, do you have five separate houses owned by five separate people?
And the developer has no ownership, and that's why there's no recourse really, is because there's no ownership for the developer. You know, in a condo association, you can lien the association. You can't do that with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There, there are a lot of implications with that and, and.
So just be, the developer entered into this agreement with the town, but when they buy their homes, this is part of their, part of their due diligence to check what, what covenant or, or any of that that's on the deed. But it goes along with it, because it's not just owned by the developers, it's owned by whoever owns that property, so they're responsible.
So, so even if it's in the deed, it's, it's one of those cases where we don't have policies
Right.
to, like, how do you enforce that, if that, if that's even enforceable?
Right.
You know, whose job is it to do what? And can you lien, is it legal to lien a house because they're not cleaning out their catch basin?
And there may be other, I only know this because we were working on these regulations and I remember it was, I remember Pat, my other Pat or John, said, oh, we already have an example of this in town over on Development Circle, that they're, they're responsible for cleaning out these mitigation systems. And we all around the table weren't there, because we were all new, and I was like, oh, really?
But that is why it would be prudent to review the planning documents, to make sure that what you have makes sense and it's enforceable and that you have, that you need to enforce it, if we're gonna require something like that. So, to be clear, there's a lot about this that Paul and I, you know, are not fully understanding yet because you, you have to be an engineer to really understand some of what the implications are. And some of it is not really even, it's, it's a little bit of a, I, I'll say it out loud, a farce to think that a, a small town can do some of what it's expecting to do.
It's certainly an unfunded mandate.
And it is exactly an unfunded mandate, yes.
All right, so everyone should be paying particular attention to who's responsible for what. I think as Caroline already said, nine tenths of the responsibility falls upon the select board to make sure that these things will be implemented. And I looked at it earlier today, I mean, I don't know how, we don't, there is no one else to, 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 to do it, so, I mean, I don't know. I don't know, you can't pass the buck to anybody, I don't know. I mean, the water department's doing what the water department is, we're asking the water department in a couple of cases to do things, I don't know. We can't compel them because they're a separate government organization. There's the highway department, which we obviously have oversight in the planning board, but the rest are all us, or.
So.
MAS, I mean, whoever comes after us, because this has, this is not gonna be, this is long term, this is not, we're down in a year, and this is.
So I do notice that many of the items are two thousand items with two thousand twenty or within two years, did you say somewhere four years?
Years.
Were these number of years given to?
So, so, so that's a really interesting point, thank you for bringing that up. I don't, if you look on page fourteen, we're actually missing years there, and we're gonna have to fill them in. But, but I wanna bring your attention to, to that column, it says, beginning year of implementation.
Oh, I see, okay.
So there's sort of this implication that you're gonna start, you know, this certain level of stuff on year one, and then in year two, you're gonna do year one stuff plus year two stuff. And that it's not that you do one thing and then another thing, but that you do cumulatively more every year.
And some of these are annual.
Right.
Ongoing, it's not just, yeah.
Some of it's annual, some of it's, you know, four messages a year, so we can pick what the messages are and how they're going out and when in the year. There is some flexibility that way. There's also, so there's, so I, I jumped ahead. Page fourteen is municipal good housekeeping and pollution prevention. So we need to, Paul had filled in dates for that, so we need to do that, but there's also, there are categories to this, so at the top of the page, on the left-hand side, public involvement and participation is page six. So those are things that you're doing that are specifically, not just outreach, because messages is the first thing, putting messages out. This MCM two is, you, you have to involve the public and you have to measure how many people come and you have to show that you are enticing people to attend meetings. enticing people to attend meetings and not just reaching out to them. The third part on page eight, illicit discharge detection and elimination. This is more in-house with the select board, working with the highway department about. We're gonna need some policies about how we train people and how we do what we do to ensure that we are not discharging more than we need to, for example, salt. So you can see that DPW is listed a couple of times. I'm not sure whether that's really the best answer, given that, you know, again, the select board. Stormwater, it's your, it's your infrastructure, yes, it's your outflows. So you have to really be sure that you have all your outflows.
They were mapped by?
Yes, they were and we missed one at least. So we found another one and we're not really sure how it connects to the infrastructure under the street. So we will likely be paying for cameraing at some point to determine how it connects in. Pet waste is a huge thing, I know it's a pet peeve of Mr. Rollo.
I wish there were a way to confiscate people's animals.
So by the way.
Negligently disclose of their pet waste.
It is measurable to count pet waste in a park and then put up a sign and then measure pet waste again. And I'm not saying that facetiously, like, that may be something that we are signing up to.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm not surprised. Between Bicentennial Park, Scotland Road and they had one down by the carers. People just tossed their little poop bags into the ravine down there. Or they didn't bother to pick it up on Scotland, they just leave them piles.
Hopefully, education will help with that.
Or banning dogs to down there might help to take the remaining, walk their dogs somewhere else.
So as you are evaluating or reviewing this. Suzanne has served on the stormwater committee. She was part, going to the coalition meetings and she started filling out this NOI. She's gone away on vacation and her commitment was in seeing this NOI filed. I don't anticipate that she's gonna wanna stay on the stormwater committee. Because of the gravity of the responsibility with this, I am suggesting that a select board member be a part of the stormwater committee and that the select board delegate the timetable of the obligations. And sort of do some of the grunt work to make sure that, you know, this is the pamphlet we're gonna send out April first and this is the workshop you're gonna have on, you know, May fifteenth and so forth, so that the select board can implement rather than completely manage. You have a good stormwater group. And I think they'd be willing to take this on, but I think you're gonna need help in making sure that you don't miss something. Because we have a lot of reporting, it's not just the sending out the messages and the doing the stuff, but it's also in the reporting to prove that we've done what we've said we were gonna do. So we're gonna need help with that and so that's why I had sent that email about getting a board member on. And that doesn't necessarily have to mean, mean the coalition meetings, though I think that would be valuable as well because they inform the materials that you can be using to carry this out. I would also suggest that you have the road agent participate in the stormwater meetings since he's got a considerable amount of responsibility in carrying this out as well. But the first step is the filing. So Denise, did you wanna, I hate to put you on the spot.
I circled most of them that I found, you can take this with you. Most of them, it's either R O L L I N S, okay? And then select boards are destroyed throughout, so I just circled what I, what I recently found.
Alright, very good.
So throughout that, you can get me another copy after the fact.
Yes, I will.
Yeah.
Okay. There are a number of things, really everything, we have to report on where it's being kept. The easiest answer to that to my mind is on the website. We have to say that things are publicly viewable. It also helps us know where things are and keep track of them if we put them on the website, so. We have the stormwater system infrastructure maps, it's two pages. We have the MS four district map, which I've had scanned, just one large page. It's the NOI, the original MS four general New Hampshire permit. The spreadsheet of impaired waters. And I think there's one more appendix. But I'm suggesting that we have a specific page, I'm gonna be meeting with Tia in the next couple of weeks to talk about some changes to the website and that's one of the things that I'm gonna ask of her is to create a dedicated. There is a section to stormwater, but I, I think it might be, I'm gonna be looking for some changes if it's alright with you to make that. Make this easier to find and all in one place.
So on page fourteen, you needed three dates. We need to come to a consensus on.
Yes, years.
Catch basin cleaning, street sweep program and road self-use optimization program.
Alright, so complete and implement two years after effective date of permit. Effective date of permit should be very shortly, you know, once they receive this, they'll review it and they will notify us that they have approved our permit. So beginning of year of implementation to my mind is, you know, between now and 2020. If it's something that we're already doing, it's, you know, catch basin cleaning, we might as well put 2019 since we do it anyway.
So it's the beginning year of implementation, 2019. We're already, yeah, we're doing street sweeping and catch basin anyways, right? So 2019 is. And then road self-use optimization.
So they're already, Ed and Georgia are already Greenstone Pro certified. They've made changes. You can put 2019. It doesn't mean necessarily that they've reached the highest level of what can be done.
Yeah, but we're beginning to implement it, so.
Yes, that's.
That's the point, right?
Beginning year, right.
So 2019 then, because we're already doing some of it?
I would think so.
Are folks okay with that? Those are the three things you needed?
I actually need the four above it as well because they're blank as well.
Well, it's just complete two years after effective date of permits.
Alright, so we're gonna do 2020 on all those, I just wanna, I just wanna say it out loud so that they're agreeing.
Alright, I'm ending it for.
Yes.
And then twenty.
And then there's one.
There's one on the next page, inspections and maintenance of stormwater treatment structures. Inspect and maintain treatment structures at least annually. So this says DPW, but really.
You want to have page fifteen?
Oh, it's hidden under my paper.
So is this something we're already doing?
Yes and no. When you, when you clean out a storm, when you clean out a catch basin, you can see, and sometimes even when they're out doing roadwork, you can see when.
I would say yes, we're already doing this.
I would say we're already doing it, we're not necessarily doing it to the level that they want us to because really, they should be lying and they're not lying. And that's gonna be.
You mean the catch basin?
Catch basin, yes, yes.
It should be 2019, I thought we're doing it now, we had Ed and.
Yeah, I think you could.
Replacing structures, all a lot.
You can see how there's a lot of discretion from pouring out of this report.
So we're beginning to implement though.
Well, yes, we are. We've got a long road ahead of us.
Not already, yeah. Are there other things in here that we need to?
If you would have a quick look, I think.
I thought that was it, so.
They did finally get to view this.
And then we'll share it. And I did notice, oh, there's only one signature.
Yes, it's all in here.
Penalty of, there's a very ominous paragraph above it for those that are signing it. Remind me that there's prison time associated with falsifying this form, so we need to make sure we get it right. I prefer not to go to prison over the MS four form. Pleasure.
Thank you.
As you could imagine.
Are there any thoughts or questions?
I have lots of thoughts. We're required to do this, so.
Yes, we are. Okay, so I'm going to make these changes and I'm gonna provide you a clean report for signature before I leave tonight, so that I can file it properly.
Starting along. Budget, it's kind of an extra worthy topic. I have kept on town hall maintenance portico because it goes along with Roman two below a twenty eighteen revised budget. Caroline told me that, I even have agreed, I should say, to sit down with her to revise the spreadsheet that we work off of to show where we've moved things around.
Yes, we're meeting Friday.
There may be, there may still be some available funds to get it done, but I I don't wanna start calling, we're running out of time quickly, but I don't wanna start calling contractors getting quotes for something that may not happen. And I don't think it's fair to them to put time into putting together quotes that may not materialize, so. I do recognize we're running out of building seasons, so. We talked about revised budget, budget planning, those are staying on the admin support as a placeholder. Budget spreadsheet management, we had, so we need to figure out who is going to have the authority to edit the master spreadsheet. And in the past, we've only had one person allowed to edit the master sheet, so there are not issues about creating spreadsheets out there. Do we want that to fall, I'm not trying to dump it on you, but you Denise as the budget committee rep. We want it to fall along Caroline as a staff member, or it could be either, any one of either of us, I mean, we can make a reason why we're doing it, but what are your thoughts? I'm looking at both of you, I mean, I don't.
I think it makes sense for the rep that's on to the budget committee. Again, I don't wanna shove that on you, but it just kind of goes along.
Yeah, I think so too.
So I will let Caroline know that she needs to grant that authority. Now, it may be actually that a staff member and you can have an authority just in case.
As long as someone, it could be Caroline and I, as long as Caroline tells me what she's doing.
Well, if she's authorized to do it. That's what I mean, like.
You can't have ten people doing things and not telling anyone.
You get the flu or something.
Yeah, it's always an admin.
Right, I mean, I, you can read that redundancy there, but you will be the main person.
Yeah.
That way I can't screw up, perfect. The timeline is on there, we're gonna go over that on Saturday during part of our budget workshop. I want us to map out where, what the coming months look like. And working with the budget committee, we have to have a public hearing and all that. And maybe have their workshop as well, to make sure we make the, remember we set the deliberative date session for February second, so that would be.
And the school's up there, it's up the week afternoon.
The ninth?
Yeah, sorry, it was.
They were thinking about doing it on the fifth, so, but they'd have pushed it back, okay, thank goodness.
Are there other upcoming dates in the immediate future, because I didn't know about Saturday until.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
The most immediate thing is Saturday, but then we're gonna start from Saturday, start our schedule.
How much we can get done on Saturday.
There will be a few that we have to do. Budget season is the busiest time of the year for the select board. So we're probably going to go one hundred and fifty instead of ninety, which would be most of the year. It slows down to about sixty in the middle of summer. Time line, we're gonna talk about coordinating with the budget committee, junkyard. Now, there's, we have made inquiry to legal inquiries at the municipal association and working with our own code enforcement officer. There has been a complaint about, actually, there've been several complaints about towing at all hours of the day and night. Day's junkyard.
That's the second business that.
Correct. So apparently, lo and behold, when, when the junkyard was approved the first time. It was, towing was supposed to happen in concert with the junkyard, so it was during normal business hours. The new owner, it's not so new anymore, but the newer, the most recent owner has decided to expand his towing business to serve not just the junkyard, but in general, towing services, which was never never approved through the site plan process. It's a grandfathered use, it's not actually an approved use out there, so. Zoning, so because there has been a complaint. Legal inquiries has informed us that really you need to have a public hearing on that complaint and let let the, if you're going to move forward with the application, let the applicant know that as a condition of approval, that he would, he or she, in case he, would need to go through a site plan review for the planning board for the second business that was never authorized. So what we need to decide is whether or not we want to go through that process. I can't, I couldn't begin to understand why we wouldn't follow the legal procedure, but the case could be made, I guess, but, so I would suggest that we need to inform the junkyard owner that we're gonna, that there's been a complaint and that we're gonna have to go through that process and outline it for him, just as they did legal inquiries in that email that we got back. Deciding the hour saves and how the process works.
You start telling me that, right?
So that's the other part of this process.
There's a concern.
Whenever you bring a legal action like this, or bring something like this, there's always the concern that there will be legal dollars associated with it. This has, this is always a concern, so I don't wanna scare people off. What the question is, is whether or not the existing budget will be able to absorb some of those additional legal expenses. And so this is what I'm going to suggest. It's already operating under an expired permit. What I would suggest, I think, would probably make me feel the most comfortable, is that we table this for the week. You meet with Caroline on Thursday, Friday, whenever. You meet with Caroline on Thursday, Friday, whenever it is, the day that you, works for your schedule. And we look at the existing budget, where we've moved things, make sure that we're all working off the same spreadsheet. Then we can reassess whether or not we think that we can have, we have money left in the professional services line that could cover. I mean, this could be, there could be no legal dollars attached to this, I mean, the best case scenario. Worst case scenario, there could be multiple thousands associated with it, so this is something that we need to determine whether or not we want to move forward.
What are the implications that they're being allowed to run this business without a permit?
I've been thinking about that myself, actually, and I have not asked, um, Mr. Clark or legal inquiries, cause it, it just worked on this today. I don't know. I don't know. Certainly, certainly there is no, um, there's no sort of statute of limitations on when the town can, can bring action. So, it's kinda like, um, um, what's the term, I can't think of the other word, but you let someone use a cut through on your property, right? And so after a number of years, it becomes, it becomes a public easement because you've allowed it to, that doesn't hold true for the towns. We, we're protected under certain things like that, so just because, there is no statute of limitations as far as I, I know from what legal inquiries told us to even bring action to this point, because he's been operating for, I don't even know how long he's been there now. He's been there for quite a while, at least, what, at least 10 years, right? That he's been there operating it, maybe even more than that, actually. So, there, there is a suggestion that we can still go forward because they never went through that process and didn't get permission from the town to add that, that new, um, that new business. It's much like up on Clement Road, where we've got a compound up there of, of apartments and, and, and barns and, and garages and then all of a sudden, attached to that, next to that, there's a, an old snowmobile repair shop that now somehow is an automotive repair shop that never went through that process either, which is the biggest, the pain, the pain of my existence on the board, but we have not found legal dollars to solve that problem yet either, but I'm hoping before I leave we can solve that, but never know.
So, um, how, where does the state fall in? Cause clearly there are some violations.
Of the junkyard permit.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're talking about, right?
Yes, well, yes.
Okay.
Yes, but well, it's sort of a two-part thing now. Because, because of the vi, the, um, the complaint about the unauthorized business that's also operating in the permitted business, his license is on hold. We're not allowed to issue the license until we resolve the other piece, is what legal inquiries told us.
But, again, what is the state doing about some regulation issues with, of the business that has the permit?
So, so D, I'm sorry, I haven't finished my thought, I'm sorry. DES, Department Environmental Services, has cited the owner of this facility, um, for being in non-compliance on a number of issues. Um, and has been working with the owner and Tom to make sure that those issues are resolved. There's still, that process is still ongoing.
So is that enough for him not to get his permit?
Those other pieces? On my mind, yes. We could, should, we would, if he doesn't, if he's still in violation of those environmental codes, then I would say that we would deny the permit. We wouldn't reach a permit, I mean, if he's.
Do we know what those violations are?
I don't know if I'm gonna have to move.
Maybe it's, are we in the loop?
Tonight, yes.
No, are we in the loop?
Okay, so before you get here, I'm sorry, these are multi-year issues, I'm sorry. So this is also why, sometimes it might be nice to have staff that outlives the, the boards, right, as we don't change. Last year, I beli, I think it was last year, um, could've been even the summer before. We received a letter with pictures, uh, from DES, uh, addressed to the owner of the, the, the junkyard and outlining, I don't remember what, four, five, six different violations. And we all went, oh, and sat up and took notice because we had just been, we'd go over and we'd take a look, but, and then we were sent, we sent Tom over once we had him more, um, his availability became, to the town. He would go over and look, but there's only so much, he could only look at what was on, um, he was only looking at what the list of, um, conditions were the town set out back when, I don't remember what year it was, I think it was, I don't remember. When he took over. And he wasn't always, not always in compliance with those, and we had to hold him accountable, we're not gonna, and he would do a little bit of cleanup and he would do just enough to, to get the, the permit. Then DES got involved unbeknownst to us, every once in a while they do compliance checks on their own. And they finally did one, they only, they have liberated staff to, um, and they did a compliance check and, um, that's how they got involved, and that's how we found out that they got involved. It was just a random letter we got one night and we went, oh, we should turn this over to Tom, cause he's the one who really went doing this. And that's how now Tom and DES have been working in concert to deal with them. He's been, Tom has been going over to check to see if he's actually making progress on the things that he's telling DES he's making progress on. So they've been working together on that. So.
Ms. Fuller?
Yeah, uh, the next one, that's why I signed that. So, I still, I think we should probably wait until we have a better handle on what the budget looks like, our existing budget looks like after your conversation. To see if there is money that we can move around. I mean, we, we cannot ignore the fact that there have been a complaint. And that, it's a serious complaint, um, and that, um.
It's also selling used cars there, which.
There are a number of issues. Well, he's allowed to sell three.
Okay.
I think it's three. Um, go back and look, I believe it's three he's allowed to sell, per the agreement that he did with the town.
Okay.
When he took, when he bought it from, from Daze, which was a long time ago now, and I don't have that year in front of me, but when he did purchase that, um, there was a lift of conditions. And then, in fact, some of those conditions actually may have gone, when, when Daze actually, they may have carried over. I'd like down, I think they operated before zoning was in, when it was in existence, but when they sold, I don't, obviously they had to go through the process. For those of you, it's grandfathered use. Undeserved conditions. So, should we table? I know, we said a lot to table something, but I think it'd be prudent. We, we don't know what we have the resources, so. We'll have a better handle on what we have the resources after the next couple of days, and then we can move forward, I think, but.
I agree, but I think that we should wait until we know something concrete with it.
Okay.
Relation to the budget.
Okay. Okay. Hopefully we didn't overstep some of what we said in, uh, public session. It could've been a non-public, but we didn't talk about any real strategies, so we should be good.
Yeah, if you wish for a non-public, that's, that's available.
Yeah, we can take a break for a second, that's, that's fine, so. I, I wanted to, yeah, I wanna talk to you about, uh, what you talked about last weekend, so, why, do you want to make a motion for?
Go in non-public? I'm mostly gonna go in non-public.
Let's talk about personality.
Okay, uh, role called Nice.
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Mike? Yes, we are in a non-public session to view the personality. So we could turn off the.
Yep. Is it blinking? Can you see?
It'll be blinking on your side.
I don't see anything.
I get the solid green, you get.
Okay, I gotta blink.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is, um, ad hoc town manager committee report. I don't know if we're prepared to talk about it tonight, I just wondered on the agenda. I'm glad a lot more people showed up than, uh, usual for our public hearings, I was actually very encouraged about that. Whether they support or not, I'm just encouraged that people attend. I think we have some thinking to do, but, um, I'm not prepared to make a decision tonight, so which direction we go, but. If people wanna talk about it now, we can, or we can table it to talk about it next week, I just didn't want us to lose sight of all the hard work that the three of them put into it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, for myself, I, I feel like she made some great points, um, I think some time to really digest and.
And you have, uh, uh, are at the disadvantage of not, having not received the initial report, so.
I, I read it.
You read it on the website, okay, I was gonna say it is available there, so.
Yep.
Where she didn't interview people in town, and that's a lot of what it was based on, so. Denise, what are your thoughts? You don't have to have it written out, so.
I'm not prepared to make a decision tonight, but I think she gave a great presentation tonight and was very informative, so I think we.
Why don't we leave it at that, like, everything that both of you just said, and we will table it then. Until, uh, next week or the week after, whenever we wanna start talking about it. But if we will have, if, if we decide to move in any, either of those two directions, it will have budget implications. If we do not decide to move in either of those directions, I still believe it will have budget implications because we need to do something. I mean, just as MS4 stuff we talked about tonight, there's more stuff coming down the pipe, so we need to have a frank conversation, I think. So, let's talk about happier things. Recreation, maybe not, I don't know. Budget update, you have, um, met with, uh.
We met last week and went over the pros and cons of what happened this year, what can we do better. Talked a little bit about budget. I am actually meeting with, um, the, the chairs, um, tomorrow. And trying to get the budget put together, and, um, so, I mean, we should have it very soon.
Okay.
And then, we're, uh, it's, the snack refunds is still being worked on.
Okay, all right, I'm glad to hear that's been worked on. Miles, you have any questions about summer rec?
No questions.
Okay. Cruiser bid, closing date and opening bid time. So we have a cruiser that's gone, is ready to go out to bid, Bob has told us about it. We need to decide as a board, a couple of things. Want, how we wanna post it, we can do the online routes, um, through the municipal association, through Craigslist, there's a whole host of things that we have done in the past online that do not cost us anything. There is also the, we can put an ad in the newspaper, um, to post the bid. I would suggest for something like this, it will probably cost us more to post in Foster's than we will get for the vehicle. At this point, it's expensive, so, to run that ad, but we're not required to do that, so.
Why didn't, um, why didn't we take it for auction?
It's a quick question, so, we, we, we've, actually, that's been one of the first time, I, when I did, well, this is the first time I asked Bob that request. So at the state auction, um, he has done that in the past, um, and they have never realized the return on investment that it costs to get over there. It just, they usually don't, they get more doing it here than they do there, which I thought was crazy, but I believe him, I mean, he said that there, there's a lot of time and energy it takes to get it over there and set it up to, for a bit of the, they call it the light barn, the state auction, and it, there's never, the money has never materialized, they've just had better luck just selling it. We only get, you know, a few hundred dollars for it, you know? People aren't knocking down the doors for a hundred and ninety thousand mile cruiser, so, you know, it is.
With no backseat.
With no backseat, right, exactly, and so, and now, and, and truth in advertising is it has to be part of the bid. This one didn't pass inspection. So, in the past, the vehicles we've sold have at least passed inspection, so.
Might be more.
We may not get much at all for it.
Scrap.
Well, we don't have to accept the bids, we can, if when we get them back, if we think that they're not, um, a reasonable amount of, that he folks a bid, and that would be part of the package that says, you know, we have the right to review this, whatever. Maybe we, we look into a scrap auction, I mean, that might. Neither of them, neither of those options are gonna get you what anyone wants to realize out of it, so.
I would just go and advertise through anything that doesn't cost us anything.
Are you okay with that, Joe?
Yeah.
I will let Caroline know that, so the next.
And put it on our website as well.
Oh, for sure, we'll definitely do that, yeah, we'll put it on our actual website and the, um, the email blast that goes out, it'll go out that way, too. So we need to come up with a date, but when we wanna post it. So if we're only gonna go with the sort of traditional, I mean, we're not gonna go the traditional put in the newspaper route, we, we're, we're not bound by time. We can, we could start the bids on Wednesday if we want, because Caroline has a, a template that we've used for other vehicles. It's all ready to go.
Awesome.
We just have to, um, um, set a date, so we could do the 26th, so this Wednesday, give her a day of buffer at least to, uh, to get it ready for tomorrow. And then keep it open for two weeks, or.
See what, see what happens, we can always extend it, right?
You just have to renotice it, yeah.
Yeah.
So, or we could say, we could start on October 1st and go two weeks, that way it'll just be two weeks straight from October 1st to, uh, the bids will close and be opened October 15th. That'll give them two full weeks, we won't just open the bids at a time, we had to say what time, I would suggest in a meeting. We'll just say we'll open the bids at seven o'clock, um, on the 15th, or. It just, we can do the 26th, we can keep it open longer, it just seems like it's a nice, it's even, start on a Monday, end on a Monday, but.
Is it Monday or 15th? Is that what you're calling the dates, on the 15th, Monday?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that, I, I think.
Because we do go the 26th, remember October 8th is Columbus Day and Town Hall is closed. We can discuss as to whether or not we, tradition as a board, we have not met on, on holidays. Columbus Day is one of those holidays, or some, you know, but Town Hall is closed, so we haven't met on days, those holidays either, so we need to decide whether or not as a board we're gonna meet that day, so.
I'm away, so.
You're away, so, but that, um, will also contribute to our decision, so, not that we can't meet, um, without a member missing, but anyways.
It just wouldn't be as much fun.
It certainly would not. I don't disagree with that, too. Okay, so the bid, we're gonna go out to bid on, I'm gonna write this down so I can remember now, tomorrow, we're gonna go out to bid on 10/1, close, 10.
15.
15, open at 7:00 PM, 10:15. We'll see what we get, we have to open in public. And we can do it on a separate day, but to.
But we have to meet again.
We have to meet again, I'd have to meet at that. It'll be, it's not gonna be a real barn burner, so I would suggest we just do it during the meeting. All right, so that's settled, that's it. SP, SRPC request for transportation plan, okay. Every 10 years, the state, oh, every year, actually, the state updates its 10-year highway plan. This is a, a list of projects that are, um, of significance that, um, towns are, are requesting on state roads. It could be Bridgewood, it could be, uh, host of things. Usually very larger ticket items that the towns aren't going to pay for themselves and, plus they're on state roads. So the one, the number one project we had suggested in the past, we can reiterate if we want to, is some sort of traffic calming, um, on Portland Avenue or the intersection of Rollins, not rather, Roberts Bear in Portland. We are probably as close to the bottom of priority, that project, um, as you can get in the region of talking. Not because people, they don't care about safety, but it's just there are so many other larger projects ahead of us that are already on the schedule. That we don't have to give much more specifics than that, we don't have to have the actual plan in place as to what, it's just that we wanna get on the schedule, and so we just have to remind them that we wanna stay on the schedule and that, that would be our number one project, if it is our number one project. If there are other things that we believe need to get on the, on the, on the 10-year plan, we should be thinking about that, and we need to let our SRPC know.
I think that's the one that's been the most verbal, um, within our meetings and, I mean, it, it's an ongoing, ongoing issue on that road.
I mean, there are, people always bring up, well, we'd love to have sidewalks, uh, on certain roads, on state roads. In fact, I remember your founder law, when I was in the legislature, he used to call me and write me and say, can you, and I'm like, well, I'd love to try to, and I'd talk to DOT, and they're like, yeah, well, we put them, the town's paying for them. So, and then I come here and they're like, yeah, not happening, so I'm like, okay, sorry. That's what's gonna happen, so projects like that, there would still be town cost sharing for things like that, they don't put in, they don't put in sidewalks anymore. Upper, not on the state's dime anymore. Shouldn't say that, on very rare occasions do they do it, so. So, let's be thinking about that, if there are projects that you've heard folks talk about, when is a request due? Let me see, they just emailed us the other day. I'm going there on Thursday, so I can ask them again. Well, I'll, I'll find it, I don't know, I don't remember the date.
Oh, we have, it's not, it doesn't have to be done.
It doesn't have to be done tonight, but I wouldn't even put it on my calendar, on schedule, or agenda, it had to be done tonight, because that's the only thing I think of. Request for assessing reports, okay. Caroline has brought to our attention, or my attention, not your attention, that we we have a contract with Avatar for X amount of hours per year of services. We have never requested or received, if we have requested, I don't believe we've requested before, a report of what, what we're receiving for our services. So, we tell, let's just say for sake of argument, these are not the numbers, but let's just say we pay for a hundred hours worth of their time. How is that, how is it broken down? Are we actually using the full hundred hours, are we going, are we going over, we know it could be beginning of summer, but.
And what was it used for, right?
Right, exactly, right, 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 so, I think it's fine, I think we should be requesting this information, we should know this stuff, so. I will let her know that she can move forward with, with. Reaching out to Avatar to get that information, now, may not get it overnight, but at least they know it's on there. Caroline has also requested to attend, this is conference, it's a day meeting. Request attend a conference for free, it doesn't cost the town anything for registration, it's free, down in Massachusetts, and we'd pay for mileage, but. It's on, where do we go? We're all invited to go if we'd like, but we should send someone, it seems like she would be the, the person to go. It's on capital planning, I think, is what it's called. There we go, it's from the Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management. Former graduate of School of Public Studies at the University of Massachusetts. They are hosting a capital planning conference for New England municipal officials. It's being held on November thirtieth in Stowe, Massachusetts. So, she would like permission to go, it's during the workday, that's why she wants permission to go. I think it's an all day, all day conference, so, I don't see a problem with it, I think it's probably to our benefit if someone goes, so.
I agree.
I agree.
Alright, I'll let her know that we will allow her to go, we do have money already budgeted for, for mileage for trips like this. Alright. Okay, cell tower auctions.
Yes.
Miles, let's talk about the cell towers.
So, Caroline and I spoke to Maria, and I don't have her last name in front of me, from American Tower last week. And I, I mostly wanted to know, because in the email we originally got, it said, option one is thirty five thousand dollars.
What are the other options?
So, I, I, I was mistaken in my thinking that it would, that it would be a forty year contract. It's an extension of forty years on top of the remaining sixteen.
Okay.
So, sixty six, fifty six years.
Fifty six years, okay.
Fifty six years, for thirty five thousand dollars, one time payment, none of the other terms change.
Okay.
The other options are, it's basically a second option, but with lots of other mini options, is to give them a. So, we would no longer get an income stream from the cell tower revenue, we would get either a lump sum payment. But we have to put the land into easement, into perpetuity. Which this woman knows is an issue with municipalities, so she said, the American Tower would likely accept seventy five years or ninety nine years, which are things that need to get, but, you know, we're talking fifty six, seventy five years. But the one time lump sum payment would be four hundred and two thousand dollars. We would no longer receive an income stream. Another option is to take some of the money upfront, fifty thousand, and then get a monthly payment for ten years for X dollars. I think this was in the email that Caroline sent, but there, and then there's also like, no lump sum payment, forty two hundred dollars for ten years.
And what was another option, like a balloon payment at the end of that?
Yeah, if we took nothing, and then in ten years got five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, lots of options. What I would suggest, so, the woman said, the thirty five thousand dollar signing bonus doesn't remove our other options. So, if we decide next year, let's, let's do a lump sum. So, the things to consider are, do we wanna put it into perpetual easement?
Seventy five years.
Seventy five years. We would be giving up the revenue if they got another carrier on that tower. So, the, the money that we would get would, is a lump, regardless of the money that American Tower earns off that tower. So, she alluded to, if we were able, if we extended the contract for forty years, that makes that tower more attractive to other carriers. That they're trying to drum up business essentially, so, that could potentially increase our revenue from that portion.
Right.
So, there's a, there's a lot of levers to pull, I think we should probably take the one time signing bonus and evaluate. So, she kept asking, like, what is, what's the town's immediate need? More money would be great, but if we're giving up, you know?
Right.
You know, in ten years, someone's going to be upset that we're getting zero.
Sure, of course.
So, that, that would be my recommendation. And she did say, whatever the option, it's ninety to a hundred and twenty day closing for their legal team to, I don't know if our legal team would want to.
Yes.
The, the, the one time signing bonus, none of the other terms changed, so, I don't even know if there would be need for legal review, but. So, that's the long and the short of it.
So, the, taking the one time bonus.
Yep.
That's signing up for forty more years.
Yep.
That's all that is.
On top of the existing sixteen years we have left.
An additional forty year term to the lease.
And then there are other options after the fact, that you can pursue?
Yes, yep. So, I'm, I'm assuming, and she didn't say this outright, but my assumption is taking thirty five thousand dollars now will reduce, so we're not gonna turn around next month and say, oh, okay, now we'll take four hundred and two thousand dollars. It is gonna come out of one pocket or the other, so, it's gonna reduce the future payments somewhat, but. She did also say that, and I didn't, you know, I haven't been involved with this before, but they keep going up on this one time payment. She said that they've made offers for the past however long, and this is the, the most they can offer, but.
The limit of their, what they can offer.
She, she did say, if we had a number in mind, that we could approach her with that, and she would bring it to her finance team.
Okay.
I don't, I, I don't know, I, I mean, forty thou, I don't know what we'd wanna, they might say no.
But the intent of, I, I think we were looking into it rather soon, so we could get it for this year, right? And we're not going to be able to.
Ninety days would do it, but.
It would be a tight, yeah.
It prob, probably not, is.
I think you have to assume it isn't going to.
I would, and it's a fair assumption. I mean, we already sent in the, the form without it, the, the updated.
You can still get it in, and go into bum down. Which helps offset taxes going forward, so that's not bad for them. In my mind, it is. How do you think, Denise?
I mean, I think we've been vetting those.
I sort of doubt there'll be cell towers, I mean, they're gonna figure.
I was gonna say that too, so that's the other thing, right, it's kind of a joke, they say they want an easement for seventy five years.
Yeah.
Do we really believe that cellular technology is going to be the way that we communicate in seventy five years? I don't, I tend to believe probably not, but you never know, I guess.
I mean, I think that we should probably go, go forward with it, and, you know, with, at this point, just this signing bonus thing, and.
Is it in the folder?
Caroline did indicate, should we print it out?
This is the thing, this is where I decide my life and where the notice of intent. I'm not going to prison over this MS four thing, I tell you that much. Very good, right?
I hear the mail plan's not though.
It'll cost me less than what I paid them. It's not in here, so.
I don't think there was anything for us to sign, I think we have to agree and then the woman.
Oh, then they'll, they'll bring the contract forward, oh.
Yeah, they're telling they're gonna run the contract.
Okay, so, someone needs to make a motion as to what they wanna do.
I would move that we move forward with a extension of eight five year terms for a thirty five thousand dollar signed bonus.
Second.
You don't wanna talk about it anymore?
I'm good.
Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, alright, we will let Caroline know that we will go forward with the extension of the lease for forty years.
With a total of fifty six total now?
That's right.
Okay. Or will be.
Yeah, apparently sixteen years is not in the comfort zone of itself.
No, I get, I mean, they're, they're making a, a large capital investment in all of these towers, so they need to have, they need to have some stability. I mean, it may seem cuckoo to us, but we're not putting multiple thousands of dollars of equipment on these poles, so, right, I'm not in that business, so. Alright, I'll let her know what, okay. Town administration, standing item, board member activities, what do you have going on this week, Denise?
I'm meeting with Rec tomorrow night, I'm meeting with Caroline on Friday afternoon, and that's all I have.
That's it?
Right now, anyway.
I'll be working on getting the, the planning board agenda finalized.
Helping John with that?
Yep.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it, much appreciated. And I'm going to, back to Straff original planning, they have their, their quarterly meeting this Thursday, so. Get to go to that, that's the afternoon in Rochester, so, some more time on. I don't think there's anything else going on, besides the coming buildings in here, coming in to meet and stuff, that seems to happen almost daily now. Yay me, um, yay us, I don't think there's anything, I don't know, I'm sure there's something else I'm working on, but I think about it. And we have our, we all are coming in on Saturday at nine A M, right here, for, for a budget workshop. So, we planned on about three hour, you know, sorry, I, I, so many.
No, it's not.
We've been parvious, trying to think of what we've gone over, what we haven't gone over. Alright, I don't think that anything else, any surprises that I can think of. Right now, forty, but we will come up with our, our schedule, some more on Saturday. Alright, building permits, first one I have on the pile, it's not in numerical order, sorry, twenty eighteen dash zero nine one, two eighty Bear Road. It's an electrical permit, fee is ninety dollars. Granted, Mr. Clark has reviewed it. The date I don't know how many times. I'm not writing the expiry today, I almost did it, it went to expire on six thirty nineteen, it's not gonna expire today. Keep doing that. Next is permit twenty eighteen dash zero nine zero four eight four Portland Avenue. Oh, driveway permit, so, we had sent a letter before. The owner thought that the driveway was part of the original building permit, and he had to wait for dry weather, which I get, so, he's done it anyways, he understands. It's a hundred and five dollar fee.
And what number was that, Portland?
A four eighty four, it has a number now, so. May give me a year, so.
I just didn't hear it.
Just has to come back and fix anything else with it, so. Uh, the next is permit twenty eighteen dash zero eight eight, fifty four Moses Carr Road. Alteration, oh, electrical, sorry, I need our fee reviewed by Mr. Clark, I'm updating their electrical one right now. Oh, I need to cast more of these signs, so, sorry. Whenever you're ready, I will do the last. Uh, permit twenty eighteen dash zero eight nine, two eighty Bear Road, plumbing. Mr. Clark has reviewed it, and it's a ninety dollar fee, it's a minor plumbing. So, you may not think it's minor, but as far as that goes. And that's it, go with that, oh, yeah, I'll take these back, put that in the work folder.
Why didn't you sign it?
Oh, I didn't, apparently.
Did you?
No.
Oh, you can't.
I always sign up to you.
There you go, there we go, it's weird being in the middle of passing things, I'm sorry. And now that we have a third person again, I don't actually got to go both, back and forth both of us, no, sorry, you sign. Alright, review of correspondence, so, Miles. As the Clark committee, or they used to say before we, give you the nice title of Clark, the junior member of the board. You get to review the correspondence in the select committee.
Is it this or the?
It's this, I don't know, this is.
So, the notice of intent, we know about? We have a memorandum for the State and Hampshire Office of Strategic Initiatives, would a board member please complete the survey?
What is that one now? That seems to be the Office of Planning, I have to call it.
The OSI Annual Survey of Municipal Land Use Regulations.
Well, you know, we usually do, we usually give that to the, to the planning board rep, to have the planning board take care of it.
Okay, I could do that, it does say my name.
Does it? Awesome, I didn't just make that up, actually, the note's on there, right, okay.
You're making.
Did you sign that in this form or?
Haven't gotten to that yet.
He turned it, there it is.
It's coming next.
Is, okay, this is the.
Yeah, this is it, so, do you want to, do you wanna hold on to that, Miles?
Yes, I will hold on to this.
You sure, or keep it in the folder until it's, we have, oh, we don't post it now?
I know, I forgot my little box.
Right, right in the posted note, the save for planning board meeting, maybe. Maybe John can help us fill it out that night, it won't take any time, if there's like a couple be doing it.
And what, can I see what kind of this?
Sure.
Oh, let's do the scary one next.
Okay.
So, we need a motion, 'cause only one of us gets to sign this. This is the notice of intent for coverage under small, small, MS four general permit.
I move the select board chair sign the MS four application?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright. Let's do it real quickly, we'll notice my signature or not. There's that, I'm going back now, the die is cast.
I'll set some of them?
Oh, sorry, so, do you just want, my folder, we can put it in the, the left hand side of it, so she knows.
She's still making it. She just needs to go in that folder, I was just holding it behind, so I went just from the beginning.
So, this can go in for, if I want to lose sight of that, to have. Should I hold on to this, or put it back in here and she'll?
Put it back, maybe put it in there.
Put it there.
So, it'll be saved for.
So, it's not fair to make you do this still, but you're for a timeout, so, every few weeks, we get a bill from our. It's not fair to make you do this still, you're for a timeout, so every few weeks we get a bill from our legal council.
Okay.
I've already approved the bill, we got a bill, but just so board members can all see what we've been spending legal dollars on, we're always spending legal dollars on something.
Okay.
Every time they email us and I respond, yeah, so let's see. Review email from Emerald, well, I didn't just send him one, he sent me, as, as a board, I was trying to respond, and cost us thirty five bucks, just email.
Okay. What's that settling? So.
You don't have to read it, just so, you can pass it over, at least you have a chance to look at it, you can take a look at it if you want, we've already, we got to pay the bill out of the way, so. It's just so you know it's going on.
Yep.
That's the credit card.
This is the credit card bill, if people want to review it.
Okay.
Probably look at it today.
This is all the credit card, oh, the.
For all the private.
Credit card bill?
I'm sorry, I do look at them like.
Oh, it wasn't, I was here for a while.
We have a purchase order.
Okay, this happens.
I can't read what this says, coding for Accutone.
Coding?
It's a purchase order of fifteen twenty to LHS Associates for coding for the AccuVote machine, alright, that one took me for a loop, machine for primary.
Oh, the election?
And it costs us one thousand four hundred and fifty two dollars to get the machine up and running for primary day.
What does that mean?
Is that every election?
Is that budgeted?
Yeah.
Where?
Under elections.
Waiting to see if they'll speak too?
So we have, so you can make the motion, and we'll, we're on it.
I move a fifteen twenty purchase order to LHS Associates for fourteen fifty two for the AccuVote machine for coding.
Second.
Okay, so I'm moving seconded, any discussion, seeing that, all those in favor of purchase order fifteen twenty, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, alright, yeah, no, it's.
Miles, are you aware that you have to be here on Wednesday?
I was, I was mainly aware of that, but Dad got sworn in. But I've obviously told you.
Yeah, because I didn't know until Wednesday.
This is a magazine from the, the office of the governor, New Hampshire's School Safety Preparedness Task Force. And she's, Caroline's written a note for police and fire.
Yeah. School where I got their own copy.
Okay.
This is a report that the governor assembled a commission to look at, school safety, I think, one thing they couldn't look at was. From what I heard on the news. That's good, I think.
Okay.
Yep, so you done with your folder? Are we done with all the folders? Do we have any mystery folders I'm not remembering?
Oops, sorry, I'm sorry, sorry.
Stick it back in the office. Alright, so, need to clean that folder up. Last but certainly not least, clear the input.
I don't know, she didn't say they. Are the streetlights the town, or are the utility company that they're supposed to?
One more time, so you?
Streetlights.
What about them?
Are they the town's responsibility, or are the utilities responsible?
Both.
Okay.
It is our responsibility to let the utility know that they're burnt out, if they're burnt out, and they replace the bulbs, and we pay for them to replace the bulbs.
Well, there was, the one at the end of Washington Street and Church was out, but there was a truck there today, I don't know if they were already notified.
Washington and church, I'll say it was on the list. So what happens typically, so you just, you know?
Yeah.
Someone like yourself comes in, or calls, or what, or emails and tells us that the streetlights are, we report it, and months go by. I mean, literally months, sometimes six months, sometimes almost a year goes by before they actually fix them, just so you know. It's not that we don't, we actually report it right away, because it could be a public safety issue, so Washington and where church?
Yep. It's along the railroad tracks.
Yeah, yeah, no, so that would be something we would want. So is it on, is it, so when you go home tonight?
I will check.
It should be on.
Right.
In theory, if it's working, so if it's, if it is, can you just send me an email, so I don't bother reporting it again? But if not, I'll, what happens every Tuesday morning, or as close to the morning as possible, I either come in, or I call Caroline and I go through the agenda. So I won't tell her about it until the morning ring anyways, so. That we need to add it to the list of things we need to report. Thank you for that.
They were, they were on, ever source and, and a policeman was on Rollins Road doing something with streetlights today.
Oh, good, yeah, there's a number there that were burnt out too, so maybe they are finally replacing them, which would be good. It's a double edged sword, right, it's good that they're being replaced, but then we'll get the bill for how much it costs to replace them, so, it's not cheap, so. There has been a suggestion, just so you know, I don't wanna belabor the point, we, and we all wanna go home, but it's been suggested to us a couple of times actually, that if we switch to LED lights, there's a capital investment to begin with, but within, I think it was two years, like a really quick return on investment, you make your money back, so, I mean, it might be something that, I can do it this year, but something the town needs to look into moving forward, I guess, the guy came to us, I don't know, a couple of years ago, I saw him, was it?
Two years.
Two years ago now, so. He's like, oh, Boris adjusted, and, well, Boris has got a lot more money than we have, but anyways, but yes, it's, it's, so thank you for that.
Would that be used to use the signing bonus for that?
Yeah, I was gonna go more narrowly, but.
Would it be beneficial to put that on like, the capital improvement plan?
It may be, yes, we hadn't done it yet, but it may be. It may be. There's always these things that fall through the cracks, so, it may be, maybe not, I don't know, but, anyone else? Charlie, do the trifecta, no, okay. Alright, one will not be heard from, two out of three, bad, so nine oh four, we're gonna adjourn, by consensus, alright, thank you all. Back to the longer meetings, I'm sorry, but it's about time, we got more to talk about, so.
It's not ten o'clock. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, wait, Miles, sometimes it's ten.
That's past my bedtime.
Me too, but, me too.